I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the public for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, good evening. Thank you everyone for coming. We've got the first item on the, we'll need your approval of the Board of Aldermen October 21st, the study session.
Motion to approve.
Any special? All in favor?
Aye.
Any votes? Next up, public comments. Do any public have any comments? Alright, the first, I got my own business discussion consideration of possible action regarding Bartlett and West's proposal for project management on the Public Works Project. Was there, did they have those attachments?
Yeah, I think they did.
As you can see there, we got, uh...
Good evening.
Yeah, only a minute. We could've waited a minute. You can see here some of the, the past orders of just kind of the process. You can see how it's scoped out, the work for the various projects. And, uh, it just had the pricing on it. It was priced down in the first bill. Oh, yeah, but there was, yeah, there was, okay, there we go. Mr. Ross is here from Bartlett and West if you have any questions. The one thing that we were discussing and just, uh, and I just within the interest of disclosure, I just wanted to sure, uh, and you can clarify, but this is the question was, these numbers here are the design and the process. This is not a shovel being turned or a bulldozer doing anything. This is, uh, we get it all teed up and then we'd still pay those, those paving or whomever on top of that. But, as I understand it, because that, that area is, you know, not good repair, it's not just as simple as putting asphalt down like we did on the way to City Road. So, uh, there's some stuff that would run off. It's making sure we're getting that water out there, not flooding people's houses. There's a couple of collection boxes that essentially they've been building up from on, you know, Lake City and Hudson.
But that money also said in here that, that the runoff wasn't, or the stormwater calculation wasn't part of that.
Good catch. Uh, we, we had that discussion.
Yes, we had that. That, that's an error. So, that, that will be removed out of, out of the contract. The, but what was intended by that, we're not doing an analysis of the whole thing and putting in storm boxes all the way down, you know, each street. Um, but we do have at the bottom of Hudson, right there at Lake City Road, um, a box on each side of Hudson and a storm pipe across that. We've got to collect that water at the bottom of the hill. And then, we've got surveying, uh, coming in two weeks to, uh, validate all those elevations. Especially on Jefferson Street, there's a lot of places that are very flat where water is, is ponding. And we want to make sure, uh, we get that put back in properly so it actually drains and we don't have a ponding issue in the future. So, uh, we'll have some survey work ahead of all that to make sure we get that done, done properly.
So, yeah, so we're not asking you to approve this tonight.
Okay.
Yeah, there's, there's a few cleanup items that need to be, uh, addressed on there. So, yeah, this is just a draft so we could talk and if you guys have any further questions.
Would this amount be kind of lumped into that bigger number that we're going to use for the federal dollars?
Right, uh, I think we've got, yeah, we have that kind of hand chart that we did with budget. It had the sixty and the twenty and whatever. Uh, my takeaway was, was that basically that project over here on Hudson where we, or at least I thought, was going to be more like in the forty to fifty thousand, it's really more in the hundred thousand range because of the engineering that has to be done in addition to the actual project.
Yeah, it's a, it's a lot more than I thought too.
So, I just, I just, I wanted everybody, because when I saw this, I think, okay, is this, okay, that's what we thought. But this is the, just get it ready to do what we need to do, so.
So, that, yeah, that would, the, the surveying, the design work, putting it out to bid. Um, we'll have it on, on our website and also go out to a, a bid home, bid house. Uh, so it would go out to a lot of different bidders. And then, that, that would be bidding, um, several different pieces so a- as we go through the process. So, Joe and I were talking earlier, a, a couple of trains of thought because contractors are not going to hold their price if we bid it as all one great big project, not hold their price for several years. Um, but we can put some clauses in there. So, we'd like to at least try and bid it out as all one big project. Uh, see what kind of prices we can get and have the ability to go back and say, okay, now, uh, we're going to, we're not going to do all the overlays because the price is too high. Um, we can bid those out individually as we go, or we can take that price and tie it to asphalt index, if you're familiar with that. And that index adjusts as oil prices adjust. So, you wouldn't have a huge increase, um, on a price, you know, three years from now, uh, unless that index had changed. So, uh, they would follow that index and, and you still would have the ability to say, no, we don't want to do that. We want to, we want to rebid it. So, we've got that kind of that built into there. Um, I'm hoping we, we don't have to use that kind of money. So, we would just build it hourly as we do it. And, um, that's kind of a, what I see as, as a maximum number.
Never not to exceed that.
And then, uh, we would also do the construction administration. So, we're going to manage the, the pay applications and making sure they've got their insurance and bonds and, um, do their payroll properly and all that kind of stuff as well as, have someone on site. Uh, I think I put in there a couple of days a week. So, you know, if they're not just doing it on their own, we'll make sure somebody's out there measuring and making sure they're following the plans and specs and, um, making sure you're getting a good project out of it.
Yeah, I was just going to ask just for my own information, what, you know, kind of the brief summary of what each one of them was, was. You know, like the, uh, what the, I know that kind of the survey and design, I get that part. But what, what kind of what goes into the bidding for twenty thousand?
Well, that's a, assuming we were going to put it out in different, different packages. So, there, there's a, probably a little extra in there. If we do it as one, um, that can come down. But, so, we've got to put the specs together, um, advertise it. So, that goes in, like I said, on the online system. Uh, there's prep for that and doing things on the website. When contractors call asking questions, we answer, we fill in all their questions. Uh, we keep the tally of all of that to, you know, for funding purposes. We've got to have a, a show of, you know, who's plan holders and who's actually bidding. Um, then we, we go through the contracting process. So, we would work with them in getting the contract, negotiated, approved, uh, by you. Uh, so a lot of different pieces that go in, into that. It's not as simple as an advertisement and sign a contract.
And you have people that stay on site while the work's being done?
Yes, they, they wouldn't be here every single hour, but at, at least, I think, sixteen to twenty-four hours a week that they, when the contractor's working, that they will be here.
And then you track also, like, the, the picture that these guys are paying prevailing wage and all the, all the trust records and paperwork around that to...
Yeah.
Keep us out of trouble.
Yep. Unfortunately, there's a, a lot of paperwork that is shuffled through all that process. So, it just takes a little time.
On, uh, on the first page, I didn't see project number one. It says phase one design and did preparation be completed within ninety, is that days or hours or weeks or?
Yeah, it's supposed to say days.
Days.
So, our, our plan with this would be, we get, get the survey and information done for all projects. And then, uh, the best time to bid a project, the best prices are typically February, March timeframe, um, before contractors get their bellies full. And so, you know, in the next sixty days, we have it ready to go and have you numbers. So, by the time spring breaks, they're, they're ready to, to rock and roll. And then the, the rest of it would just kind of be as, as it goes. So, um, if, we talked to the mayor earlier, if you've got more funds than what is projected on that breakout, you know, each year. So, if you've got, uh, say, and, you know, fifty thousand dollars more than you expected next year, oh, we, we can wrap in another one of those phases and, and package that together. So, i- it, it's fluid how we can go through that process and we're just trying to be flexible with you along the way. So, um, if there's a point where an, an emergency happens and you don't have the funds to do the next phase, we can delay that and, um, put those clauses in your contract. So, you've got the flexibility to, to do that a- as you see fit going forward.
Is there different phases of, um, of quality, I mean, as far as how long a certain street will last? You know, as far as how we could maybe, you know what I mean, instead of a street lasting thirty years, maybe lasting fifteen, where we can tackle more streets? Is there anything like that in thirty, I mean, I'm just asking?
Uh, yeah, I guess specifically in this one, um, there's certain places where you won't have to, um, you completely tear out the street. We can do a mill and overlay. And, and other places, the subgrade is completely, uh, ruined and, you know, great big potholes that have continually filled. So, in those places, we would, would cut out the asphalt, um, excavate. I, I'd say probably we're going to excavate twelve to eighteen inches of soil underneath the road. Uh, compact that back with rock and then put asphalt back. Otherwise, you're going to have potholes for years to come. So, uh, yeah, we'll watch that very carefully and make sure we, uh, we, we spend your money appropriately and, and not waste it. So...
Sorry for asking, but...
No, no.
You're, you're asking so many questions to what I asked. I mean, an hour ago, so you had asked.
Yep, yep. Daryl, Daryl's been asking those already. So... And I know there's some thoughts also of, uh, some other funding mechanisms. You know, there's a, a lot of different funding packages out there right now with, uh, the, the federal money that's going in a lot of different directions. So, there's some specific to water and sewer. There's some specific to other types of infrastructure. And, uh, we want to start looking at some of those kind of things for that, especially as, as you move forward. Um, you know, a community, excuse me, a community building or a sewer project or, or something. Package a few of those together and maximize the, the benefit of those funds with the funds you already have. And, uh, so we'll work with you, um, trying to maximize that as much as we can.
I'd like to say that.
And we've, we've, we've got a lot of relationships with the, the different funding agencies and that there's, it, it's, it's moving like crazy in lots of different ways. So, there, there's a lot of different mechanisms, uh, I think, that, that could benefit the city. We may not qualify for CDBG based on beating household income, but there's other packages. You know, MoDoc can do some overlay stuff or some rehab or some sidewalks. There's, there's things like that in their program. DNR has a new program, new money, three hundred and some million dollars that came to the state last week specifically for water and sewer. They're talking about that being grants instead of loans. So, we've, we've got our hands in lots of different places there and, and try to find a place that will fit to, uh, help extend a project if we can for you.
We'll go to the DNR money last year, you guys.
The, the DNR?
Right.
Uh, I'm sorry, what, your question?
Do, do, does the city need to do that DNR money or do you do that?
Uh, y- you can. Um, we're, we're looking into it now, uh, for your, your behalf as well as a few other communities. Um, and, and there's some specific forms and deadlines that you will have to fill out. We can't fill, we can fill out some of the information, but obviously, um, you got to sign and approve that. So, uh, there's, there's some deadlines coming pretty quick on some of those applications. So, yeah, we'll, we'll let you know about those and I'll be talking to Joe.
What do you think the time might pass for us, Mike?
I think, well, I think if I understand what you would clean up, you'll, we'll, you'll make some of the modifications and you can sit there and we can vote on this at the next meeting.
Sure, that's fine.
For the next mod, just, just, that's because we need to be ready to roll for spring so we can get those bids out.
Yeah, and I, I'll, I'll give you a, a firm date when our surveyors are going to be here. They've, they've been bouncing around several states on highway projects and, um, but their, their intent is to be here the week before Thanksgiving. So... Any other questions? Alright, thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. New Business is always one of the highlights of my year. Just getting to hear the judge, he always gives an inspiring...
I know about that. Well, thank you for, uh, giving me the time to do this. Uh, and thanks for allowing me to serve as your judge. This, unless I go into lawyer mode, this is probably going to be the shortest report you've heard in eleven years. But you never know about that. Uh, we've had a couple of major changes this year, but not a lot of changes. The first one is the, uh, Supreme Court upheld my position on the sheriff's retirement fund. And I don't know how familiar everybody is with that. Many years ago, the legislature, well, an interpretation was made that we had to collect a, a three dollar per case court truck fee for the sheriff's, the state sheriff's retirement fund. I entered order, as well as many judges around the state, saying it was unconstitutional and we did not collect that. At about the same time, I was reviewing the bond account that was in place when I took over as judge here. And by the time I got done with all the review on it, there was about twenty thousand dollars in there that should have been transferred over to the city, but never was. The board at the time said, at my suggestion, said, we're going to put that in reserve just in case we have to pay some money on this sheriff's retirement fund because we're not collecting. But it turns out, the Supreme Court said, no, that's unconstitutional. So, we, we've got that money set in there. Now, we used a little bit of that, uh, in the last couple of months because the other big thing that's happening is we're changing the computer system over the mandated Show Me Courts. Uh, and we've had, have a few pieces of new equipment in order to do that. And so, we used a little bit of that money out of that fund. The good news about Show Me Courts for the public is that it will be on CaseNet now. So, anybody can go out there on their computer and look up their case or look up anybody else's case and see what, see what's going on with the court. There are a lot of ins and outs to it. We have been in the process of getting up and running. We're required to have it operated by January first. Um, I think we're going to be able to get there. But one of the things that's going to happen, and probably within the next couple of weeks, uh, I'm going to have to increase, lower it increases hours, uh, because all of our active cases have to be manually inputted into the new system. There's no, there's no interface between our system and theirs. The other piece of good news is that in the process of saving up, uh, Show Me Courts, we had to establish a new bank account, which means that in the very near future, the bank account we've been using for the court is going to go away altogether. Well, I've held a ten thousand dollar reserve at that account. So, between the two reserves that we've had, uh, we should have more than enough to pay for the equipment and the additional, uh, hours that the girls will need to get all this input. With your approval hopefully tonight, we will welcome Mike Spiegel back as our prosecutor. Uh, I've been looking forward to it and hope, hope, hope that you'll approve that. Uh, he's a good prosecutor and I'd love to see him back. Just, just a little tidbit, last year I told you the story about the Lady Liberty out in the Alcoa. This year I'll tell you about the Missouri, Missouri seal up there. When I first became state representative back in, after ninety-one, some group gave me this. And it sat down in my basement after I, after I was no longer state representative. I brought all the stuff home and it sat down in my basement and I had no idea what to do with it until I became your judge. And you had the Buckner in there and I thought, what a perfect place for it. So, that's another of my donations. And by the way, when I'm no longer your judge, I don't want it back. It's just going to my basement again. So, I'd be glad, as always, look, any time you would like to come to court, I not only welcome you, I invite you to do so and set watch, borrow, all the court session. And, uh, I'm happy to answer any questions I have. No questions?
Thanks, Mike. As always, we appreciate your service and appreciate you taking time.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mike.
Excellent discussion, consideration and possible action regarding the appointment of a prosecuting attorney. Uh, Mr. Spiegel is here with us tonight to answer any questions that, I think it's been about eighteen months ago or so that he had to step aside for a while and we've had, and the other gentleman, I apologize if you're wrong, it's me. But, uh, he notified us that, uh, when, when Mr. Spiegel was available again, he would like to, uh, resign from his current role. And so, uh, Mr. Spiegel is graciously agreeing to serve again if we're willing to reappoint him in that role. So, let's see if anyone had any questions and I have, uh, I, you know, if you have any questions, Mike can obviously speak for himself. Better than I can speak for him. So, uh, just, uh, open up for questions. If not, you take a motion to approve.
Well, I've been around, as you all know, with the city for quite a while and, uh, Mr. Spiegel and, uh, Mr. Larrizo have done a nice job prosecuting and making decisions that affect the people that have come to court. And I would, uh, move that we set Mr. Spiegel again as our prosecuting attorney.
Is there a second?
Second.
I have a few questions or I guess concerns before we vote on that. Um, obviously I'm a researcher, so I do my research. I like to go out and work for it. Um, and I think over the last year, year and a half, this board has done a nice job of moving the city forward financially, transparency, all those kind of things that I think we lacked in the past. And, um, just doing my research, knowing that Mr. Spiegel has been suspended for the last year and a half. That's why he hasn't been practicing by the Missouri Supreme Court. I think it would do us disservice as a board and as a city to bring him back. I think the aesthetics, it looks bad. I think, I believe in second chances and all that. I just don't know if we're the ones that should be giving it to him, right? And I don't know you personally. I'm just going off the facts, everything I read. And I just don't think it's in our best interest as a city moving forward.
Is there a reason why? Just to, just out of curiosity?
Um, it's a character issue, absolutely. If you're suspended by the Missouri Supreme Court and you can't practice law for a year and a half, I, that's usually a serious offense. That's a pretty big deal. Uh, the manner in which it happened, I can read it, but I, again, I don't want to, uh, embarrass anybody. So, I think preying on vulnerable adults, uh, is just not in good character and not what the city should take part in. It makes us look bad.
Oh, what?
Right. I mean, it's not fun. It's not anything, uh, but as an alderman, I think the city's best interest is what we should be looking at. And I want everybody up here to know what they're voting for, uh, to know you have to defend whatever you're voting, uh, to your constituents and everybody else.
Question has been called. Uh, do we need a roll call in there? Can it just be, uh?
Just doesn't need to be a roll call.
Can I ask for a roll call?
Can I, uh, the mayor can. Can I ask for, uh, the judge to say a piece about it? Can you recommend it, right?
I do recommend it. I don't think Mike has the ability to tell you that he made a mistake. But the fact of the matter is that he's practiced a lot of years and one mistake should not bar you from doing your job. The Supreme Court has made the decision that he has served out the punishment that he needs to serve out. He was a good prosecutor for us. He was, he's a good attorney and, uh, he's great to work with from the court's perspective. He does things that a lot of other prosecutors will not do. And I think the chief can tell you this, when somebody says, I didn't run that stoplight instead of the stop sign, instead of just jamming it down their throat, he'll take them back and they'll get the video from the police department and let them watch it. And ninety-nine times out of a hundred, what will happen is that defendant will come back out in front of me with guilty because they can see it on the video. And Michael, do stuff like that, that is good public relations that most prosecutors won't do. Uh, they just, they just don't, they won't take the time to do it. He'll talk to defendant, unrepresented defendants, that most prosecutors won't do. So, absolutely, I, I highly recommend it and, uh, have no problem with working with him. And my recommendation that you take that.
Can I ask you one question?
Absolutely.
And again, with all due respect, I'm not trying to be punky, but is there, it's an honest question. Is there a conflict of interest for our judge to be recommending or advising our prosecutor? Because you guys technically are separate, right?
We are separate.
Because then it seems like there could be an issue with a defense attorney that comes in. I mean, he can watch the paper, he can see this and say, hey, I want you recused because you guys are in cahoots for a better war.
Well, I don't know about in cahoots. I mean, if, if a judge can't be friends or work with, uh, other attorneys who are prosecutors and defense attorneys, especially a part-time judge, uh, you wouldn't have it. You wouldn't have any part-time prosecutors or part-time judges. Now, I'm in, I'm sort of a unique situation in my case because, uh, I have, I've pretty much retired from practicing law and have for several years. My job is being a judge. But, uh, having personal relationships with other attorneys is certainly not a contract.
Leaving when it's, yeah, not as direct, directly working, uh, in this, so...
I mean, Mike and I don't go out and have, have dinner together or, uh, he goes deer hunting. I, I haven't had deer hunting since I was eighteen because I was afraid I'd get one hatch cleaned.
No, I mean, he was just reinstated last week, if I'm not mistaken.
Yes.
So, I mean, I didn't even feel comfortable if it was six months down the road, a year down the road to kind of show yourself, prove yourself that you've learned something, that type of thing. But, again, the board's going to vote. It seems like they're...
Let me, let me, let me respond to that because the, the, the Supreme Court, uh, has made the decision that the time has passed for that. Uh, and they're the ones that decide whether or not any of us have a law license. And so, they're the ones that have made that decision that the appropriate time has passed.
I mean, we have to hire him.
Sure.
Right. I mean, you can go, "Mr. Spiegel, you're HR doing an interview." And if we look on someone's resume and say, hey, you've had a year and a half working. What happened? Oh, I was suspended for unethical behavior. That's going to raise a red flag on any HR, right? And anybody's going to say, well, okay, we're probably going to hire this guy. But obviously, it's different now. Everybody's got their agenda and we're rolling. So, let's take the vote.
Well, I, 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 I need you to respond to that vote because when the, when you read the paperwork on why he was suspended and you call it unethical behavior, I think there's a whole lot more to the story than that. And, uh, and there are always two sides to a story. And sometimes they get told, sometimes they don't. So, I, I, I think it's, it's an extreme position to say it's unethical behavior.
I would just say... So, he was suspended for a year and a half for ethical behavior?
No, I was suspended for a year and a half for an error in the domain.
Yep.
Uh, you categorize it as unethical behavior. People get suspended for all sorts of reasons. It's not always unethical behavior. So...
Well, I mean, I mean, I can read the conclusion at the jury bar. So...
And anyone, I mean, you can pass around for it.
But, yeah, I mean, you had this relationship with an emotionally vulnerable client, which, again, that is, it's bad, but it's extra bad. She was at the hotel house, right? That's not, not good at all. And he, it was intentional and knowing behavior. So, I don't, most people would say that's on that question.
Was there, I understand, uh, what you're, what you just said, we both understand that. So, don't, don't think I don't. Was it illegal in the terms of underage and was it consensual? Because that, to me, brings another thing to...
I, I mean, if, if she was not underage, it wasn't essential.
Okay, that's all I know. Thank you. Thank you.
If you don't mind, I'll, I'll, you still want a roll call?
I would like it.
For a roll call?
Alvin Betts?
Aye.
Alvin Jones?
Aye.
Alvin Ross?
No.
Alvin Lockup?
On judge's recommend, recommendation?
Aye.
Alvin Norris?
Aye.
On the code?
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. All right, item number three, bill number twenty-one twelve, ordinance ten sixty-one, building section four hundred dot five one zero F one. Oh my goodness, I took the wrong one to read.
Bill number twenty-one twelve is ordinance one oh six one. And ordinance amending sections four hundred five ten F one, four hundred five forty D, four hundred six twenty A, and four hundred six twenty D three of the City of Buckner Municipal Code, pursuant to bill number twenty-one twelve. And Mr. Mayor, this is simply a cleanup housekeeping. If you recall, we amended the entire zoning code. It was about that thick. And when we were putting it into the full code, the, there were some transpositions that we related, thought we had the right code reference, and we didn't according to our service. And so we needed to go back and clean this up. We're not changing, substantive changingly, anything. It's just a cleanup to, so that everything ties to the correct citation in the code.
Okay. Need to move to suspend the rule?
Yes. Move to, move to suspend the rule.
Second. All in favor of suspending the rule?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Second reading of bill number twenty-one twelve, ordinance one oh six one. An ordinance amending sections four hundred five ten F one, four hundred five forty D, four hundred six twenty A, four hundred six twenty D three of the City of Buckner Municipal Code, secondly, council of bill twenty-one twelve.
Do you need a roll call?
Remember the first? Second answer.
Second, and then what?
Second.
Alvin Betts?
Aye.
Alvin Jones?
Aye.
Alvin Ross?
Aye.
Alvin Lockup?
Aye.
Alvin Norris?
Aye.
On the code?
Bill number twenty-one thirteen is ordinance one oh six two. An ordinance amending sections one oh five point oh three oh, declaration of candidacy rates, dates for filing in the City of Buckner, Missouri Municipal Code, pursuant to bill number twenty-one thirteen. And this is again, just a housekeeping matter. We need to clean up to get the dates to line up with the new statute. So that's all this does.
Senator, second?
Any dissent? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Bill number twenty-one thirteen is ordinance number one oh six two. An ordinance amending sections one oh five oh three oh, declaration of candidacy, dates for filing in the City of Buckner, Missouri Municipal Code, secondly, bill number twenty-one thirteen.
Senator, first?
Second.
Alvin Betts?
Aye.
Alvin Jones?
Aye.
Alvin Ross?
Aye.
Alvin Lockup?
Aye.
Alvin Norris?
Aye.
On the code?
Aye.
All right. Uh, next up, discussion, consideration and possible action regarding short-term rentals. I'll let Joe go with that. I know that there's a property here on Hudson that's been showing up on Facebook as an Airbnb or something along those lines. And I think that's what I know.
Yeah, I'd like to say that. This is, really, I just want a discussion of how you guys want to handle the Airbnb's for now, short-term rentals. Like I said, if you want to get one that's listed in Buckner now, there's more to come. You know, you've got several options. I'd like to speak with those, but you know, I know personally, when I go to Airbnbs outside of the Kansas area, I usually get charged a hotel fee and they go to cities. So I kind of let you build the options.
The property at issue is a little bit unique because it's a residential property, but it's actually in a commercial zone. So the first question is, how do you want to treat this Airbnb? Personally, it still feels like a residential property to me, which would mean that non-conforming use could continue and they can go about and have their business and operate it as an Airbnb. On the flip side, the first question is, if we're going to treat it as a commercial business, no longer a residence, then that property may lose its non-conforming status. And we've got a whole other issue before we ever get out of the gate on what do we do about an Airbnb? I could do a lot of research on that. Joe and I discussed it. And quite honestly, I wasn't sure that you, this is something that you're concerned about. And if not, then I'm not going to waste your time and money to try and analyze is would they lose their non-conforming use? The second issue is, if it's an Airbnb, we certainly can put together an ordinance and put regulations in place. But if we're going to allow them to operate, then they should be collecting sales tax. And that sales tax should be reported as a commercial enterprise. I don't know how this one is technically operating, but typically through Airbnb, then that, all of that is collected by Airbnb and is, and is turned over to the state as does any hotel or other guesthouse or bed and breakfast or anything else. So that's typically how that's done. But again, until we get some direction on, are we good with it? Then we didn't want to go too deep down that rabbit hole if, you know, we're going to, the board isn't interested in following that path.
Did you say it was already commercial?
It's owned, be.
It is, it is zoned commercial.
Why is it, do you know why it's zoned commercial?
I think all of Hudson Street is from the railroad tracks to twenty-four is zoned commercial.
Yeah.
And have they applied for a business license?
Yes, they did. But then when Casey Chung sent in the paperwork for business license, they emailed us back and said that they, it was, the lady who was running the Airbnb is not living there. So we don't know if that's accurate or not.
Is this, is this property listed as her?
Huh?
The, the property in question, she's the owner?
Did you ever get a question over there?
My question was, is the individual who's living in that place is the lady who is running the Airbnb portion of it? But she's not the owner of the property.
You want to know if the owner and the runner is one of the names?
Correct. And the answer was no, the owner is not the person that's the renter. And they. And they are not operating with a business license, correct?
Not as, not as right now. Mike, so we sent all the application, Casey sent it all to him. If you ever chime back today saying that now she is living in the Airbnb.
Could we start maybe doing this in steps and then reconsider that those properties performing that role get a business license? So we at least have a feel for how many of those there are. And then sometime if we get fifty of them, whatever the number is, maybe five or two, whatever. But I wouldn't say we want to use Mr. Meyer's time to write an ordinance. It's going to cost us whatever.
Yeah.
Or one business. But if we get multiples of those, then by requiring the business license would allow us to get our hands around how many of them there are.
Betts, she, she has said that she's rescinding the use of that place as an Airbnb now? It's no longer an Airbnb?
Oh, she wrote on the letter was that she is living in now. We just got the letter, just literally got the letter today.
How are we tracking rental properties?
They got to get business licenses. Every rental property has to get a business license.
So they have to get a business license?
And then now you're subject to the inspection program also. But they got to be inspected every two years, once every two years, five.
So we could, I mean, we could find out through Airbnb whether they have, whether they're working.
Well, it would seem to me if they've, if they're not using this Airbnb, then we have more to run. But then if they wanted to use it as an Airbnb moving forward at some point, they wouldn't be grandfathered in because they're not using it as an Airbnb currently.
Council? Would there be, need to be two business licenses? The owner and then the person that's acting and running it?
Not necessarily. It's the, the business is what counts. And in this instance, the business was the Airbnb. And so, you know, the structure between the employee and the owner or whether it's independent contractor or one lease and then another lease, you know, the, the business being operated there needs to have the business license. If it's just a rental property and the person residing in it now is, then we need to have a business license because it's rental property. If it's going to be an Airbnb, then that would be a different business theoretically. And just because somebody's residing in it doesn't not mean it's still not operating as an Airbnb. I mean, you can, you can have an Airbnb that's my, this one bedroom or this first floor or, you know, you don't necessarily.
Or related for a month.
Yeah, right. Yeah, I mean, you can live in it and I tag it out because I'm going to Texas for the winter and you're in for three months and then I come back. And so, you know, yeah, that's, that, just because somebody's residing in it, doesn't mean, the easiest way to check would be look on Airbnb and see if it's available. I mean, if it's listed as an available property on Airbnb, then you're pretty much sure, yeah, it's, it's property.
So if it is, say, listed on Airbnb, is there any, is any of this going to be where they can bypass what we're, if we decided to put an ordinance in today, where they say, well, we have to grandfather this place in because they beat us to the ordinance?
No, I don't think so. It wouldn't, the, the activity wouldn't, wouldn't predate. The, the only issue that I, on the grandfathering that I was thinking about is that because it's a home in a, in a commercial district. It's, it's grandfather. Question is, do we want to take the position that, well, but operating a rental house or an Airbnb is commercial activity such that you can't do it in that house because it's a business? And I didn't think that felt right to me. But if you walk down the letter of what is a business in this building, you know, so.
So he'll keep following under rental ordinance now? And when do they do inspections on those? Like when they first apply for the business license and then in two years? So if they're operating in that, they have to have a business license anyway.
And they don't.
And they don't yet. So, I mean, I don't think we should create an ordinance just yet until we gather more information. But we should definitely let them know that they need to file a business license for the real property.
Yeah, do we need to send a cease and desist as a business until we get a business license? Fill that in.
Will this up to you get us?
That's already required now, right?
Yes, you require me to visit, but this simply could be a, I don't know, cease and desist as much as a notice that, hey, look, you know, if, if a rental property, you require a license. So you need to pull one.
Well, we don't even know if the actual owner of the house knows that they're wanting to do an Airbnb.
Right.
Okay. I think we have some idea, you guys, of what you need, sir.
Right.
I think we understand.
Sure.
Uh, next up, discussion, consideration and possible action regarding appointment to the park board. I'm told Sherri Miller is able and willing to serve.
Yes, she is.
Okay. Any, any good things you want to tell us or any reason we shouldn't?
Well, she's new in town. I believe she did grow up here. She's a, a new business owner here in town. And she's got creative to create a little store across the street. Other than that, I don't know, she's, she's happy to join still.
Major qualification? Was there any?
Senator, Sherri Miller, park board, second.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Elect the threshold conference, anything?
Yeah. So just a reminder, be my, Saturday, we do a Christmas tree light, holiday light. We get in the park at nine AM, we're starting the pool house.
What, is that this Saturday?
That's this Saturday. Nine AM? Nine AM.
I'll just, uh, remind folks that, well, I want to thank you to everybody that helped out, trunk or treat. Boy, that was a lot of kids. I've only done it a couple of years, but I thought there was a lot last year. It was here, even more. So thank you for helping on that. A reminder, Friday, I think it's December third, we'll be doing the Christmas tree lighting down here at the depot. So I don't know all the details of what all is going to happen, but it'll be wonderful. So we, uh, I've been set some expectations for you there. Uh, finally, thank you, Volker Minoris. Uh, he is, by his own proclamation, he's damn near sixty tonight. So thank you for coming to, instead of being festive with your family, you've come to share with us. Thank you for your service.
Welcome to the gopher club.
You get that senior citizen parking lot?
Well, we have to.
If there's nothing else, thank you. That's a good, well, sorry.
Did he ever get, well, I noticed the Lifetime Building is still got an occupant in it, an apartment? If they actually live in it. Have we sent this?
No, we haven't. We talked to the same one. We talked about all of that. He said that, Dose Hall.
Yeah.
And he's talked about, he said the team group, team data, this sort of, you know, by the, those that come to sell it, it's not to be sold as a unit of a boat.
I remember that part, but I don't remember the current occupant. I'll pull up my, I'll, I'll figure, I'll get you any of those.
Remember.
Because I thought they weren't supposed to live in a commercial property.
Right, right. Especially when it's not being commercial, it's just property at this one.
I got one more thing to give you. Sorry. Uh, Joe, because last meeting, we approved that long-term housing, we were going to try to get on the long-term housing, fill out that application.
Yeah.
Once we get approved on that, can we put that information maybe on the water bill or something? The address and phone number for people to call or?
And I, I watched the minutes of the last meeting and it's seven hundred fifty per household.
Okay, yeah.
In my time, I know.
Yeah.
We, once we're good to go, promote it. Yeah, we'll see. We'll call back. It's, I sent back to state, so we should be good soon.
Okay, cool.
Are we going to, um, go ahead?
Are we going to send the citizens that got switched in ordinance or zones?
Orders.
Orders. Uh, notification of that, like, can I go there? I mean, they'll get a notification from Jack's County, that's what when it comes up to the next location. Send them, look where they're in, where they go to go back. I mean, but, I mean, I could, I could put it on the website, new map on the website.
Yeah. Did, um, will you ever hear anything about that house on, uh, North Hudson?
Got sold.
Yeah, I know it's sold. What are they going to do with it?
They got, they keep, they applied for permits. Yesterday, today, they called and asked about permits. They're going to get it out. He's going to go in and fix the roof. He's going to get it out, pay sheet rock and check everything.
As long as there's a plan in place that I can tell.
Yep, it's, it's sold. And actually, the guy's planning on, he's applying for permits as we speak.
Oh, so we're making progress.
Yep.
I'll get a home plate. I ask you guys for money, so I take money and I try to get money back. So we actually applied for a seventy-five hundred dollar grant through the state for technology-based equipment from the PD and that was granted. It's going to afford us five more tough books and stations for the course. We're still waiting. We've got another hundred twenty-five thousand dollar grant. We'll wait and see what happens with that. But it's, that was the part I did well.
Good speaking. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thanks for your work. Thank you. You're welcome.
Uh, just to let everybody know, as of today, all the forms that are online are now fillable and can be submitted to one of the website. And it goes to L Box's head city hall. So the complaint form is now officially online, where people can go online, fill out complaints. And you send it straight from there and it goes straight to our L Box. So you don't have to put it out, fill out county hall there.
Cool.
And same thing with baseball rentals, bill rentals and all that. All the forms that we got available are now fillable and say.
We don't have time to edit them.
No, I have time to edit, but yeah, it's like, uh, what do you?
Came online.
How many pages do you have here?
But you only have six by ordinance. But we'll, we'll still entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, everyone.